Board to, uh, to order, sorry. Roll call?
Trustee Gillis.
Here.
Uh, trustee Kreis.
Here.
Trustee Killie.
Here.
Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Masco.
Here.
Trustee Shavoni.
Here.
Here. Please stand for the pledge, and after the pledge, please stay standing for remembrance of our veterans. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started this evening, if there's anybody with any of the municipal commissions or local organizations in attendance, if you'd like to stand and state your name, we'd like to welcome you to the meeting.
No.
Okay. At this time, I would like to call up Officer Timothy Luns to be sworn in. If you have family that would like to make a difference, let's see if done. Hi, how are you? Welcome aboard. After the important sentence.
Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Officer Timothy Luns.
Officer Timothy Luns.
Having been appointed to the position.
Having been appointed to the position.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
In the village of Midlothian.
In the village of Midlothian.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
I forsothad do solemnly swear.
Forsothad do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of Midlothian.
And the ordinances of the village of Midlothian.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All of my board.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. If you'd like to address the board, this is the time you would be doing so. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, please stand.
Yes. Kathy Cabane, Peter Evans. I'd like to know the status of the community assessment visit that needs to be scheduled and the paperwork that needs to be filled out in relation to the community rating service. No, yeah, community rating system, sorry.
You have a point. I have an appointment with Mr. Cozal. He's been on the phone first. Try to see how the bills get this call over.
Okay, very good. Also, with regards to the mayor's request to repeal the tax cap, has the board gotten together and come up with any other solutions for raising revenue besides this huge tax increase? I don't think that raising our taxes 33% for three years in a row is the answer to the problem. After sitting through two community meetings with all the residents and listening to all their concerns, and then also doing some investigating on my own and trying to educate myself as to where the village finances lie, there's still a lot to learn and a lot of numbers to crunch through. I can understand how we could use perhaps one year of a tax increase to get us through next year to pay those bills, but to do it for three years in a row is just not feasible, and I don't think that that's an acceptable solution. And I don't know if the board's gotten together to discuss this anymore, but from my point of view and from all the residents that I've been with and have had conversations with, we're a little disappointed that the board hasn't come to any of these meetings prepared to discuss any other solutions other than just a tax increase at these public meetings.
Okay.
So.
First off, let me answer your question. First off, it is only a one-time 33%. It's not over, it's not for three years in a row. It's only one time, this year alone.
Okay.
For the 2014 levy.
We understood was that we wanted to keep it that high for three years in a row.
No, it's just for this year and this year alone. Okay? So it would only, it would only happen to this levy. Second off, yes, the finance committee did meet last Friday. They're scheduled again to meet this Friday, and the majority of the board has been present at these talks to come up with other alternatives.
And are you gonna communicate that to the village?
As soon as they come up with a solid plan to bring forward, yes, we will be bringing you the levy.
And what is the scheduled date for the vote?
The vote would be on December 8.
December 8.
Yes.
And I see on the consent agenda, there's a list of bills. Are the list of bills laying anywhere that we could view them?
I can let you use mine if you do it back.
Okay.
Okay. I forgot to make an extra copy. I know you wanted to see that, sorry, okay.
No problem.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Yes?
Dan Ryback, mayor's husband, in case you guys don't know him. I do know that the finance committee met, and one of the agenda items was that the trustees want to close the fire station on the east side of town. And if you read Facebook, it's in there too. I can tell you, as a railroad worker, I'll tell you, two years ago, one of my coworkers fell over of a heart attack. I have a shop that CPR trained 50% of them. The fire department is five minutes away, 10 minutes if they stop for coffee. It took 30 minutes that day because we had a train in the way. My friend is currently deceased, died two years ago. If, uh, some of you who know my friend Chico, he had a heart attack in this town. The fire department was there and under five minutes, Chico's alive today. So when we think about closing a fire department on either side of town, that cuts your staff in half. So if the fire department on this side of town has to answer a call on the east side of town, and the train goes by, that leaves everybody on the west side of town waiting. So for a $200 a year tax increase, we're gonna close a fire station and possibly risk a bunch of people's health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Kathy Hill, property owner, 4223 West 147. I'd like to know approximately how many citations are given to cars that park in front of the mail collection boxes in front of the post office? I was there on Monday, and this happens frequently. There's a car parked right smack in front of the collection.
Let me interrupt you, because I can give you a fast answer to that. If you answer that, it's zero. You cannot ticket, just because there's a yellow line there. State law does not allow to ticket on a yellow line.
So who do we have to address that to, the post office?
There's, it's a state route. We can't, we can't do anything about it. Or county route, I'm sorry. Any county or state route, we have no.
So then we would address that to the post office.
There's nothing the post office can do about it. It's state law.
The county?
The county.
Yeah, they can't, the county, you can address it to them, but I could almost guarantee, because it's a main route, they can't put no parking on a main route like that. We've dealt with that many, many years ago. I know it started years before I even started on the job here. And they did years ago use to ticket that, and the laws all got much more stricter on that, and won't allow it at all.
Okay, thanks.
If I know, there's a lot of it's because I'm all day.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Reisner. I live at 15103 Waverly. I couldn't even tell you how many years back this new home's been put up at 15107 Kildare. No sidewalks. They took down numerous trees of the village when they put the foundation in. Since then, we've got beautiful Gerder around the corner now. But he's put railroad ties. It's a one-lane street. Now, if we have to get an engine down there, we can't park on my side of the street because we got a deep ditch. But he took over and said, "This is my property." The property per ne'er goes up to his house. I've had Keskell out there, I've had, oh God, who else did I have? Oh, Hanson. I ain't had you out there yet, but you're coming. So he's way out of bounds here. And he's got railroad ties just in front of my house, not in front of the home.
Mr. Shaveri, can you check into that for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
The guard rail, we're gonna, Steve.
I know, I know, I brought that up to Steve too.
We're gonna get to that within the next three days.
I says, "If there's a fire, that's my house."
Yeah, we're gonna separate it, move it all the way.
Thank you, thank you. But railroad ties, that.
Where are they at?
Right in front of my house.
Which house are you in?
The one with the big flag in front. I'm.
Are you to the north?
The second, I'm on the dead end.
What's your exact address?
03. 15103.
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir? Thank you.
Anything else?
When a lot of them.
If I get him, will you share?
Yes.
Yes.
Maureen Burke, 15044 Harding. I'd like to know when they're gonna finish painting the outside of the village hall.
They are still in the process of doing it. They had to stop because we had to do some repairs on some of the pillars. They were, it was all rotted away and just fell apart when we scraped. So it will be finished shortly.
I trust they're going back to white?
No, it's gonna be this beige color.
You're kidding me?
No.
Whose idea was that to change it?
It was mine.
It looks like hell, to put it very bluntly. It looks terrible. I was in the doctor's office the other day, and some people remarked on, they wanna know what, we were just talking, and I told them I was from Midlothian. And they started laughing. They said the color looks like the inside of a baby's diaper. How do you think I felt? Embarrassed.
I apologize, I thought.
It's terrible. Please, put it back white.
Okay.
It's been white all this time.
Thank you for your comment. Yes?
Mayor, do you have any idea, I'll see, Andy Cortez, I'm sorry.
Yes.
When John Amico is gonna, is gonna hold cash register supply in here?
They have been making movement. Something had delayed it, and, and we're hoping to bring students in shortly. I believe, Nicole, that's where we're sitting right now.
Yeah, he was signing up students for it, but he can only be students, no public there.
Yeah, they can't get public in yet. With, it's a licensing thing with the state.
Okay.
That's the delay. Anybody else? Yes?
Has Joe McDonald gone after, or begun the process to go after any of the tax anticipation warrants? There's no really reason to wait on that. We don't need to wait for the vote from.
We're already talking with banks, yes. Okay.
Can I ask a couple, two que, a question about this, the list of bills?
Sure.
Who's 146th Street Realty Corp. for $36,000?
That is a deal that was struck for Bill K. Ford, where.
Oh, that's the, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then there was one other line item in here for a legal bill, but I don't think that it was our attorney's firm. I could be wrong. Let me find it. It looked like a legal bill, it looked like a law firm. I didn't wanna mark on your paper, and I lost what page I was on. Oh, Ronald Hurley Prosecutor Services, $4,800?
He is our prosecuting attorney that goes to Marvin Ford House to get our tickets, to be, we have to litigate the tickets.
Okay.
Is there any other comments? Okay, now I'll close the floor of public comments. And at this time, we'll move on to trustee business. Trustee Kreis? Oh, I'm sorry. I want to stick the consent agenda. I'm sorry, at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the approval of a meeting minutes from October 8, the closed session minutes from October 8, the committee meeting minutes from October 22, the bill lists, and the department reports from the Fire Police, Public Works, Building Department, and EMA.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove number five, the department reports. The only reports that I, well, somebody guessed to the factory, the only reports that I could receive are Building Department and Police Department. I don't have, um, Fire, Public Works, or anything.
Anybody else have those reports? I thought they were all being put on your desks.
No, all I have.
You just have those two?
I just have those two.
Because I have them on my desk.
I have, please pardon, I have the, I have Public Works, and I have Fire.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I thought they went on your desks, I apologize. Okay, well, do you wanna just do then, we'll take out the Fire, Public, and EMA, and we can do those next meeting?
Okay.
Okay?
We can just remove those from number.
Or do you wanna just remove all of number five, and then we'll just approve those at next meeting?
Or we'll do that.
Okay.
Well, next meeting.
Okay, so then I will put that on the next agenda. So we'll be looking for one, two, three, and four. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve that.
Hold on, ma'am, I'll second.
Roll call?
Trustee Gillis.
Aye.
Trustee Masco.
Aye.
Trustee Kreis.
Aye.
Trustee Killie.
Aye.
Trustee LaRue.
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to trustee reports.
The only, the, the big thing I have to report on tonight is, last week on Thursday, I submitted two grants to the Regional Transportation Authority, and that's how we decided to submit these grants. One was for the improvements, streets, detectable warnings, lighting, and crosswalks in the transit-oriented development area. That grant amount was $980,000. The other is for the walkway adjacent to the Midlothian Creek with lighting as well. That grant was the amount of $303,527. I wanna thank Jeff Cozal for your assistance in getting this together, and Nicole Faber too, for helping me electronically pull all this information together. It was a lot of work to submit these two grants, and if they are funded, any portion of it, they will be funded at 100%. So I, I think that if you're not in the game, you don't, you don't, you don't get anything, and the village has to go after all outside sources of funding right now. We had, we did have to pay for phase one engineering, which I begged Jeff to keep to a minimum to qualify for this, but all of the other, phase two construction engineering would be paid through this grant. So keep your fingers crossed. The RTA acknowledged receipt of both applications. We should be notified in January if we were selected. The reason we did two separate grants was that we thought we would have a better chance of funding, and the way we separate, we separated out each individual line item because they may not fully fund these grants. We only fund portions of the grants. As I wrote the narrative, I kept that in mind. I tried to make strong cases for all of the items. But, and if it's funded, the projects would not be initiated until sometime in 2016. So I just wanted to report to everyone that those two grant applications have been submitted. Keep your fingers crossed, because with the village's financial situation, the only way we can see any of these types of improvements, I believe, is through grant funding, especially when it's 100% through the RTA and CMA. So that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Shavoni?
As mayor, the Building Department had a planning commission meeting last night, and they were unable to meet because they did not have the power. And that is all I have.
Trustee Gillis?
Oh, yes, I just wanna make the board aware that the Fire Department is working on a AFG grant. Deputy Chief Rita is working, getting the application, and it's basically is an equipment grant. It is due December 2nd, and we'll see how we do on that. Also, after the work that was done on the tuck pointing at the station here, Station 1, and the signs that were in front of the buildings, Fire Department obeys Station 1 and 2, they were in somewhat of a disturbed condition of, the association took it upon themselves, they're going to replace the signs at no cost to the village, and we'll be taking that association's, so we gave two signs in front of the two stations. I'd also like to let the board know that I received a letter today from Chief Hotweger regarding the status of the Fire Department of Tim Forrest. He has put in his letter of resignation effective November 24. There are really four members. This letter serves as my notice of my intention to retire from the Midlothian Fire Department. My last day is November 24, 2014. Please accept this request and my gratitude for serving the village and its residents for the past 27 years. It has been my honor to work with all my fellow firefighter brothers, past and present. I hope that I made a difference in the operation of this fire department and village. It is, with bittersweet motions, I make this decision, but it is in the best interest of myself and my family that I do this. Thank you for your support. You have given me, in the fire department, to make strides to improve our services to this community, and I hope it continues for many years to come, respectfully. Timothy W. Forrest, so he will be retiring as of the 24th. Firefighter Forrest is actually one of the last firefighters that had worked under Chief Schaffner, so it's like out with the old, in with the new time, so wish him luck. And that's all, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee LaRue?
Okay. Just wanna let everybody know, maybe, maybe some gritty minutes last Thursday, and a couple of the members have organized a food drive. We're accepting donations here at the village hall until the 16th of November. All the food's gonna go, help restock the local pantry at St. Chris's. Correct? And so we hope everybody can join in and help the needy families this year. And after that is completed, they're going to begin a toy drive for Christmas. One of our members, Frank Pearson, has been affected, together with Tim Lee, and they have 52 families that are, the Midlothian families that are, are in need. So we need lots of toys. We'll also be accepting those at the village hall, and we're hoping the day of the parade, our Christmas parade, we can have people donate at the village green at the end of the parade. We'll have boxes of them as well. And, hold on.
Trustee Killie?
No, we're good.
Trustee Masco?
Yes, mayor, just one item. I want to, I wanna thank the members of the Finance Committee and also the non-Finance Committee member trustees who came to last Friday's meeting, and I'm reminded that we will continue that discussion this Friday, 2:00.
Little business. Mr. Cozal?
Governor, partner.
Chief Godwiger?
Nothing.
Chief Godwin?
Nothing at this time, but.
Mr. Shaveri?
I just was made aware yesterday that the screen games has been installed on Natalie Creek at 149 the nights. I knew it was coming, but they never informed me, and they actually came out and did it. So I saw it and told me about it. So I'm gonna call tomorrow, get some information on how we can collect data from there. Yeah, and also I spoke with Metra, planning a little tag, email tag. We can get back to them for a while, but it's promising now that they're gonna do the tracks in April, both sides. That's how you get them.
Okay, April of 15?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not holding my breath. I don't look within that shade of blue, but we're gonna keep on and make sure we get our tracks done.
Just to get them to respond, it was tough enough. We'll get them here.
I know they said it was the weather related, so.
Yeah, at first he told me it was funding, and we're trying to put concrete in there, just to have it over. And he said it'd wait for a meeting, and say if they had any funding left, he'd get back to them. And just to drag it out, out, so what.
Yeah. Okay. We'll stay on them.
I think, from according to what I read, you'll give me the email. They claimed it on the possibility of the asphalt lands closing, and I, I would hate to think they're gonna asphalt them again.
Right.
Because we've had nothing but problems with that.
Well, he told me that, so I thought you said it was concrete, because he gave me one answer and said they had, or around it. Concrete between the tracks, I guess.
I guess we'll see.
Approaching it.
I guess we'll see.
Definitely. Just a messenger.
Okay, thank you. All right, under my business, I'd be looking for the approval of the ordinance for Mavis. This is our local cooperative with all the other fire departments.
Actually, I have a question. Can I ask a question, Chief Godwiger? There was an agenda, and I've gotten a whole number of links today, so as, as best I can tell, reading what I read, this is, so that, this is required for FEMA?
For Mavis.
Mavis requires this for, to be compliant with a FEMA recovery policy for reimbursement?
Right.
So that's all that this agenda addresses, is this one issue?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Every, every department in the state of Ohio has to follow that, that ordinance.
Okay, and as I thought, it had to be, it should be adopted by January 1st, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
It has to do with reimbursement from other departments too, or?
Yeah, wherever we go, where anything happens, we have to go downstate for something, the squad or something, right now. We have babies everywhere, so everybody has to adopt it statewide for it to work.
So that's what I meant by day-to-day operation would still be free for no, it said, it had some line about day-to-day mutual aid would still be free.
Do you see, I, I don't, I don't have a copy of it, so.
I think, I think it's similar to the ILEAS program, that's where if something major happens and they're called out, and they're called out for an extended period of time, it's certainly out of their area, that there is reimbursement available for, if they should be called out for a week or so. That's the essence of it. And you can go to Mavis, and the federal government would, or should, back up the financial cost on it.
They reimburse for all the training.
Your, 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 part of the.
An actual, an actual call-out is all dependent on the call. Trustee said, I were ILEAS, there may be this, any type of, say, for catastrophe or something in that, you know, we have the tornado, you know, we need outside agencies for assistance for, you know, they're both pretty much on the same thing.
And still be looking for a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Killie?
Aye.
Trustee Masco?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
I'd be looking for the approval of the ordinance accepting the donation of the free ambulance from the city of Oak Forest.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Roll call?
Trustee Masco?
Aye.
Trustee Kreis?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Killie?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Yes. I'd be looking for the approval of a resolution for Viking Partners to subdivide PIN numbers in the Midlothian Plaza.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
They want Walgreens and White Castles to be able to have their own tax ID number so their tax codes would just go to them, and they could pay their own taxes, and they would only have to concentrate on the mall part of it.
There are six PIN numbers over in Midlothian Plaza now, and Viking Partners gets a tax code for all six. One is Wal, one is, well, two of them are Walgreens.
Right.
And one is White Castle, and Viking Partners now has three. So they're looking to incorporate their three.
Three.
Yeah, the alley, the alley behind them is one. The buildings are one. Parking lot in front of the buildings are one. Walgreens has two. Yeah, they have that, the north parking lot is one, and then Walgreens building, and then the parking lot in front, Cicero is one, and White Castle is one.
Does Viking Partners own the whole entire plaza, though?
Yes, yes.
They do own the whole plaza, including?
The land.
Including the land and Walgreens and White Castle.
They own the Walgreens and White Castle, okay. They don't own White Castle?
They don't.
No. White Castle is, no. They own everything else. If they don't own White Castle, why are they getting White Castle's tax ID, tax code?
They're not.
They're, they're not. I'm sorry, I apologize for that. They, it's the Walgreens. It's the Walgreens. Right, and Walgreens would prefer to have their own. And just makes it a little cleaner over there, but...
And so the other, people would get their own tax codes.
Right.
Viking Partners.
Exactly. Got first to second. Roll call.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Killily?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is, we're not ready for the RDA for the 147 in Lauderdale with the new store, with Design Build Storage. There is a new player over there, and they asked for a new RDA. We're basically mirroring what was in there for the Brigham's. He's not asking for any phases or anything. And I have a lawyer trying to get in touch with him, he's hard to get a hold of, to get any further details. And if any of the trustees have any suggestions of what they want to see in the RDA, they're not talking about doing this in phases. They want to come in, demo, put up, and start, you know, start opening. So I, if you have any, anything specific in the RDA, if you could give it to me so I could include it before we move forward with that. And as soon as I have it, we'll bring it to you for approval.
Can I ask why there's a builder's parrot sale sign on the building?
We have no idea.
It's got a bunch of equipment inside.
I'm believing it's the Brigham's.
So the Brigham's been using it to store it, you mean?
Aye. I have no idea.
Well, they were actually doing, the guy I met with, the younger guy, the guy up here.
Oh, yeah.
I met with him about the water and sewer disconnects and all that. When I walked in the building, he had already cut the floor. They were already ready to go on this other project. He gave this whole Brigham all about the banking falling apart. But he was part of that rehab. So all his equipment was in there. So now they got all this equipment, all this extra stuff, and this new company that came in wants to just demo everything, give it up. So now he wants to get all that stuff. You think good? Yeah, it's a lot of good stuff, I mean. Have you remember right off?
Yes, yeah. Design Build It will buy the property from the Brigham's. The Brigham's will be gone out of it totally.
Mostly construction.
Should we keep the Class A then? Do you probably get the Class A?
Because it's on their property already, yes. They already have Class A in place.
So it transfers from owner to owner?
Yes.
Class A does?
Yes. Okay, so as soon as we get further with that, I'll let you know. The next item, I'd be looking for the approval to repair the potholes on Cottage Road due to the extreme danger of loss of our heavy equipment. And that the buses, that the buses and garbage trucks are refusing to travel down the road. The cost projected by Wally's paving would be approximately sixty-five hundred dollars. I know we actually took a chipper down there a few weeks ago, excuse me, and it caused quite a bit of damage to our chipper. So us trying to get a plow down there this winter, I'm really fearful that we might not survive. So actually, Unit One, or Cottage Road One, is getting their entire front of their road done for themselves. And that's why Wally says while they're out there, they can go ahead and do the fixing of what, the major work, just so we don't lose a small child.
It's kind of my problem with it. Cottage Road runs paying for their part, but the rest of them aren't paying for their part.
Right.
She's okay with that. I spoke with her, and she said, I told her, you know, what I was going to propose. She said, go ahead and do that with the rest. I want mine done the way I want it. She wants to pay for it. So she's going to get a final overlay.
How many houses are on that road? Twelve? So for five hundred bucks apiece, they can hit the dump, and we don't have to pay for it. They went to five hundred bucks apiece to, to...
The dump is run a million times, and I don't, I think they will.
I guess the question I have, I, I come up with it, I mean, I thought the same thing. It's not our road.
So Rick always told us, Rick has told us, don't touch it because if we touch it, we take responsibility for it.
I guess that would be my legal question. If we do something like that now, are we liable? I mean, it would be a question for the attorney. It's not our road, and we've given them...
We can't plow it.
Pardon me?
Then don't plow it. Let them plow it.
Yeah, we've given them ample opportunity to dedicate the road to the village, and, and they just refuse.
Their argument, I'm a, I'm a...
I know, you're just the messenger. You're the messenger.
Their argument is that long ago, we used to be, like, a village open office. Thirty years or longer ago, because I've been here thirty years now. But they said, now, if that was through there, we should be liable if they're going to get any of those down there. This is their...
But they don't want to work with us. I mean, it's, I guess, the attorney, for Mr. Gleason, my question for Mr. Gleason would be, if we do this work to it, then what are we liable for? Because it's not our road. It's not our property.
We have to answer your question. I don't think it would be advisable for me to answer it before.
Okay, we have to go into second session?
We can go to...
Yes, okay.
Just want to give you legal advice that's probably not in the case of the village.
Okay, and I understand that, but I think without that, the board can't really make a decision.
Was there any other alternative besides?
He basically was talking about just skin patching and filling in the holes, just running his machine right over the top. Try to level it off. Looks like the first grade.
And he thinks that'll last two, three years?
He totally thinks it lasts up to three years, yeah. But no one knows the weather and the trucks.
Right, and then what if it doesn't, and then are they going to come back to us again? I mean, I just think the solution would be to go to them and say, you can get this done if everybody would chip in the five hundred dollars.
Can I ask a question? If it's not our road to repair, why is the village's road to plow? Why don't, if they, if the homeowners own that road, why aren't they paying for their own plow service when it's ours?
Because we also have to get emergency services to those residents. You know, garbage has to be empty. The big thing is, you know, police and fire. It's, it's turning up cancer.
Oh, I, believe me, I, I understand that problem, but I agree with Karen. If, if they want the village to maintain it and they want village services, then they should turn the road, road over to the village then, and pay taxes on it, just like we pay taxes on it. The rest of the roads are town.
So... Do you want to table this then?
Sure.
I think we have to.
The offer's probably going to be off the table because the lady wants to do number one right away.
Yeah.
That'll be all over.
Okay, so...
So what's Plan B if we don't do the road? Can't get emergency vehicles down there. Hire police. They can't, they can't do anything until the spring then. At the early...
We have like a two-week window threat, and it should, it's ahead.
Yeah, and now, but this is it, this is it. I mean, I understand, you know, that's wrong. You know, I don't think Derek Justin, the president, is working with us at all, but I mean, what's, what's the choice? Honestly, what is the choice? I mean, we wait till spring and then?
Make a motion.
And then, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to...
Prepare the road?
Prepare the road.
Good motion. Play a second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Killily?
Aye.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Nay.
Trustee LaRue?
Nay.
Trustee Mascol?
Present.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Three to two, one present. Pass.
Pass. Motion passes. And the last item on my business, I have the approval to repair the damage of the headers in Firehouse One that could collapse and damage the equipment or injure people. This was discovered when we were getting the tuck pointing and all the other masonry work done over there. The metal beams above the, the doors are deteriorating so bad that they could fall at any time. The low bid we had received was up to sixteen hundred dollars. You can carry masonry to repair this.
My question would be, is this good, is this covered through the grant money that was received?
This would be in excess of the grant money. If I have grant dollars left over, I could use it. But it was grant money that discovered it, I should say. Because while we were doing the grant work on the building, that's when they discovered this part of it. They didn't realize it until after they had taken down the side and saw the damage to the metal headers.
Would it qualify for capital improvement?
No, that, the price doesn't constitute it.
So they're redoing the brick around the metal headers?
No, the metal headers are actually bad. They're going to go in and, what are they going to?
The, the metal headers from offering, they were off front here. There's a gap between a brick and then a metal like this.
Yeah.
And the rain's been drying in there, eating away all the iron. And it's, then now, if you actually look at it, you see it waving. They need to go in there and move all the old water out, put weak ropes in there and stuff, and tack it all in to water. Because right now, the brick's just freestanding. So when it decides to go, the whole facade's going to come down. And they found it when they're doing a tuck pointing and stuff, got flooded, like, just needs to get dressed right away. We see it all the time, they're noticed it too late. Bricklayers on it.
We've had it happen to other businesses in town. The dummies line up and the, you know, Naosaline or the shoot, repair bags to be, same type of deterioration that happened there.
Yeah, once, once a brick wall starts to go, it doesn't stop, you know, the whole thing.
I think that that type of repair would qualify as capital item. I would check with the accountant to make sure, but I think, based on my experience with construction and real estate, that sounds to me like it would be a capital item, if you have capital money that that could come out of.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Gillis?
Aye.
Trustee Shavoni?
Aye.
Trustee Price?
Aye.
Trustee Killily?
Aye.
Trustee LaRue?
Aye.
Trustee Mascol?
Aye.
Mike Kurtz's business?
Yes, I have a letter from Middle Oathian Area Chamber of Commerce. Mayor Ryback, on behalf of the Middle Oathian Area Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to ask you and the entire village board for permission to run a 35th Annual Santa Parade. We'll be having it on Saturday, December 6th, 2014. The lineup will begin at 3:00 PM with the parade starting promptly at 3:30. I would like the parade route to begin with Mid Oak Plaza, exiting east along 147th to the Village Green. We'll be once again putting the larger floats, trucks, and fire engines at Brills, true value, to even the strain on 147th and Cicero. If this is acceptable to you and your board, could you please confirm it in writing? If you have any other questions or concerns, please let me know as well. Lenny File from Middle Oathian Area Chamber of Commerce.
So is everyone else going to be lined up on Cicero, like, before?
I'm just thinking of a better way of getting the whole parade to stay together. I'm actually going to speak with Glenn tomorrow. I'm going to the chamber meeting to see if maybe we can organize the parade just a tad better. Because I know last year, it seemed like all the floats and everything were here, and then like ten minutes later, the rest of the parade finally came. So maybe they can organize it a little bit better. Think you kind of wait until the, you know, people get down here and then interleave things at that time.
Actually, when we've done the veterans' parade and we've stepped off on wheels, we've done everything on the roads.
Right.
And it makes it much easier. We don't have to tie it hard for it to step Cicero.
I'll see how many entries he has. If we can do that, squeeze them all in there.
I think it's, I think it's just all, I'm going to do it all.
That's what I'm thinking.
We deal with the veterans' parade.
Line up everything, yeah, for Patrick.
Well, that's, yeah, they, they solved with 147th, Duncan Patrick, and first parking lot.
Okay, we'll try to tell them to stay on this side Cicero then. Okay, so your parade is rolling, I was kidding. Okay, anything else?
That's all you have.
Okay. At this time, if there's nothing else before the board this evening, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those a favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.